So are you long-winded tonight, or are we going to get through this quick?
Me, long-winded? I'm gonna go. Fast, 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 fast. I'll try not to be, Jim. And the minute countdown, so who do we have? We have Jim Murphy, David. Haven't seen, is Greg and Chris here?
No, that, the two that are missing.
Yeah.
Here she comes.
Yeah. Speak of the angel.
I wouldn't go so far.
No? Okay. It is six. It's 6:30. As noticed, we are doing a public hearing. So we're gonna go ahead and start with the public hearing call to order. And Karen, you don't have a separate agenda for this, so I'm gonna go ahead and do the roll call. But if you do the minutes for it. Yep. Jay Brady?
Yes.
Dee Holmander?
Yes.
Jay Lloyd Cornow is here. Jay Murphy?
Here.
Gee Odell? H Randall?
Here.
Kay Van Bergen Budo?
Here.
Great. You please, there is a small flag behind me, if you can see it, but please join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united in the Constitution, in the Constitution of Justice. Thank you. This public hearing is informational only. The White Mountain Regional School District School Board will vote at the regular board meeting immediately following this previously noticed public hearing in reference to the acceptance and appropriation of the unanticipated revenue in the amount of $171,777.36 from the supplemental public school response fund number two. And with that said, public hearing portion is adjourned at 6:32. That was two minutes faster than last time, Jim. Moving forward to our regularly scheduled board meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and ask Karen to do the roll call on this one. Jay Brady?
Yes.
Dee Holmander?
Yes.
Jay Lloyd Cornow? Present. Jay Murphy?
Here.
Odell? H Randall?
Yeah.
Yes.
Greg is here. Kay Van Bergen Budo?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We did just do the flag salute, so I'm not gonna do it again. Approval of the minutes, could I have a motion for approval of the minutes from the December 14, 2020 meeting?
I'll approve that.
Moved by Jay Brady, seconded by Jay Murphy. Any questions, comments, corrections? Ready to vote by roll call.
Actually, wait. Hold on, hold on. Sorry, I just happened to notice, I just happened to notice that the meetings, the meeting minutes for the Ed Programming Committee, they seem to be cut off at the end.
I did notice that, too. When we go over the reports, when we go to the committee reports on the agenda, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss that. So when we approve these minutes, these are specifically just for the minutes of the meeting from 12:60.
Okay, okay, all right.
Anybody else? Sorry, I didn't, I shouldn't be looking down at my papers every time, but I think we're ready to vote by roll call. Jay Brady?
Yes.
Dee Holmander?
Yes.
Jay Murphy?
Yes.
Gee Odell?
Yes.
H Randall?
Yes.
Kay Van Bergen Budo?
Yes.
It's unanimous, the minutes approved by roll call vote. Approval of the manifest. We are gonna also do a roll call vote on the man, on the acceptance of the manifest and approval thereof. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I don't need it to be moved or seconded, but we're gonna go ahead by roll call. Jay Brady?
Yes.
Dee Holmander?
Yes.
I approve. Jay Murphy?
Yes.
Gee Odell?
Yes.
H Randall?
Yes.
Kay Van Bergen Budo?
Yes.
Great, that's unanimous on the manifest there for, by roll call vote, approved. Adjustments to the agenda, I have a few. Busy times, folks, busy times. So, action agenda item number two. Just wanna add to the end of that, that's a staff nomination. Just add at the end, annual salary, $58,000, that wasn't posted on there. We're gonna add action agenda item number six. And Karen, I can send these over to you directly following the wording, but I'll try and read it clearly and slowly. The item is to approve to amend the previously approved gross budget, now known as Warren Article II, to reflect the reduction of COVID contingencies in the amount of $165,405. We'll be adding action agenda item number seven, which will be to approve the fiscal year 21, '22 proposed gross budget in the amount of $21,799,900, sorry, let me start that one over, it's a big number. $21,799,910 as amended. No other adjustments, and superintendent's report.
Your mic, Marian.
All right. How about now?
Yes.
Yep.
All right.
Better.
That's scary. So, our first item is our COVID coordinator, Lisa Miller, and she's gonna give us her most recent update.
Okay. So I am going to start with statistics, as I usually do. So Coas County continues to have substantial levels of transmission, with 121 cases in Coas County. The majority of those are concentrated in the Borough and Gorm area. Lancaster did mark the map with 21 cases. There are seven cases in Whitefield, and four or fewer in Dalton, Jefferson, and Carroll. Since school has resumed, we've had two positive cases identified at the Whitefield School, and no cases in any of our other buildings. We did have a number of cases involving both students and staff over the vacation. We had six cases in Whitefield, five cases in Lancaster, and two cases at the high school. We did not send out any notices to families regarding the cases that took place over break, because none of those cases were infectious while schools were in session. All those infections were acquired at gatherings not associated with school, and all the students and staff members were compliant with isolation and quarantine protocols, and remained out of our buildings until it was safe for them to return. So essentially, none of those cases had any effect or impact on our students or staff, and that is the reason that email blasts did not go out regarding those cases. We now have a large number of students out on quarantine and isolation protocols. There are 33 students who are out at the Lancaster School right now, nine out at the Whitefield School, and 16 out at the high school. So as a result, our temporary remote programs are strained at both elementary schools, especially at Lancaster. Our in-person staffing levels across the district are critical. We had seven staff members out at the Whitefield School today, and another two who have moved to remote teaching. This ties up subs, because they have to manage those classrooms with students while the remote teachers teach. And our sub pool is very limited. The Lancaster School today had seven staff members out, they were not able to cover two of those positions today. The high school had, have five teachers doing remote teaching, so this ties up five people to manage the room of students while the remote teacher teaches. So all three schools have taken some creative approaches to fill in the gaps, and we have kept our hybrid model moving forward. So when we look at our decision matrix for transitioning between methods of instruction, published by DHHS, we have a substantial level of community transmission, coupled with a substantial level of school impact. So given these metrics, we are justified in moving to a remote model. Though if there is no transmission in schools, and we have no transmission in our schools, DHHS does advocate for schools to keep their doors open if they can. And today, we kept our doors open, and the plan is to open them again tomorrow. However, know that staffing is far more fragile than it has ever been, and we're looking at that metric hour by hour. So the takeaway here is that staffing is definitely a struggle. The hopeful part of my report, because I'd like to end on a good note, is that vaccination clinics have begun in our country, so some of our nursing staff have had their first vaccinations. Phase 1A is currently being immunized, and school nurses are included in that. Teachers and school staff are part of Phase 2, and they may have the opportunity to attend a clinic in March. So we continue to attend weekly DHHS meetings, and they keep us up to date with immunization protocols, and we are going to be sure that our staff make the connections needed to obtain vaccines if they so choose. And that concludes my report this evening, and I'm happy to take questions.
One thing I wanted to say, and you might have questions about this, is that today Lisa and the principals and I discussed the staff strain. And right at this point, our most critical strain is grades five through eight at Lancaster School, and we're keeping a very close eye on that. And if we do go to remote, that's the, the grades and the school we're gonna probably look at first. So it won't be the whole school, just that, those grade levels at this point.
So when we look at the, the critical numbers of staff from our original reopening plan, is that the 15% number that we were kinda talking about, or?
No, 15% is for school absences, so number of students out with illness. If we get above 15%, then that's one of the metrics that we look at. And right now, we've got a lot of kids out at the Lancaster School, but they're not considered sick. They're out on quarantine, or out because they've traveled. So when we look at that number, it's high, but it's not due to student illness. So we're still well under 15% when we're looking at illness-related absences.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Lisa, I know you, the team had a, a pretty good process built in for kids who are home out of an abundance of caution, but still being able to check in and complete work. Is that something that's still happening? So for those kids who are quarantining due to potential exposure, are they still able to be engaged in their learning? Because I would imagine that makes a difference as well.
Right, so that's our temporary remote model, and we're doing okay in Whitefield, we're strained, but doing okay. Lancaster Schools, that, taken a really hard hit. They had 33 kids out today, and I think that their remote teacher may have been out today as well. So she's not able to check in with them on a daily basis, so there's really quite a struggle there in Lancaster.
Okay, thank you.
I had a follow-up on, so if, if Lancaster turns to having fifth through eighth grade remote for essentially a quarantine period, I would imagine, and they're out, and the transmission increases are happening in public, when they return, is, isn't that a bit of a risk? In that sense, exposing the students that aren't remote? You know what I'm saying? I don't know.
That's the exact struggle. So that's the struggle we talked about today. However, if it gets to the point where we don't have the staff to teach our children, it's not an option.
The idea.
We're going day by day.
So Jess, the idea of quarantine due to potential exposure is, is prophylactic, it's preventative.
Right.
Well, if you've potentially been exposed, and you stay home and you quarantine as directed, you're quarantining for a period of time long enough to figure out whether you're incubating the virus and are symptomatic. And so, based on the, the science behind the quarantine timeframe, someone who has completed their quarantine appropriately and returns to school should be safe to return to school. So it does not increase that risk. But they have to follow the quarantining rules while they're quarantining.
Which we can't really ensure one way or another, but we hope that everybody.
It's, it's definitely in the public's best interest to follow those isolation and quarantining guidelines, because that's what, that is really the mitigation measure that's doing the best to break the chain of transmission. And so if, if folks are instructed to isolate or quarantine for a prescribed number of days, it's really important that they stick to that, because that allows the virus to stop and, and not spread.
Thank you. Did any other board members have any questions on the COVID report?
I have a, something I've been thinking about, and I, I'm curious, I know this is, this is way off, and it's, you know, it's way down the road, but, you know, thinking ahead strategically a little bit, since you mentioned vaccines, everything I've read has talked about with the, the different tiers and stages of who will receive vaccinations and when. It sounds like if things continue on schedule, most people will have had the opportunity for vaccines by, let's say, the beginning of summer, except for children, who are the last, right? I'm sure you've all talked about this, but I, I wanna get your thoughts on what if, you know, everyone else has had the chance for a vaccination, except for the children, and we're looking at September? Have we started talking about what, how that would impact our, our school for the fall?
So the vaccine hasn't been approved for children yet, so they're doing studies on children now. So we're hopeful that maybe in the summer, they'll start getting vaccinated, but we don't know for sure that that's gonna happen. So yeah, we are kinda wondering what is gonna happen if students are vaccinated by fall.
Right.
And we're waiting for DHHS guidance.
Okay.
So they're asking the same questions and wondering the same things, and.
Right. Yeah, I, you know, just from the news reports and everything I've seen, it's like, it, it looks very likely that we'll be facing that situation where the general population has been vaccinated, or had the opportunity to vaccinate, but the students might not have, so.
Right.
Okay.
I'm fully anticipating, yeah, we'll be masking and mitigating in the fall. I have no doubt.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, I'm sure we'll have lots of conversations about what that looks like and, and all, but it's a, it would be a different situation.
And also, yeah, the other thing to think about is that it's not mandatory. So we may have staff members who choose not to vaccinate, and what do we do there?
Yeah.
So I'm not sure.
Yeah, there's so many unknowns, I just, I'm, I just wanna make sure it's brought up, because I'm sure it's on all of our minds.
It is.
So on those levels of the rollout of the vaccine, is it, is it the pre-K through 12 staff teaching in school, isn't that like 2A or something, January to March?
It is Phase 2. I think it, we're hoping March, that's what they're hoping, is that Phase 2 will, will be in March.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Sure.
Next, Jake is gonna take the lead on the program of studies for the high school. And I believe all of you.
Good evening, folks. Yep, so you should all have the program of studies and change forms. I'm going to briefly just cover the main changes that are being made to the program of studies. If you have questions at the end, either myself, Rob Scott, or Blair DeForge can answer those. Rob's gonna cover the CT stuff, when we get to that at the end. But we're just gonna cover the, the major changes that are, that are coming in the program of studies. So as I work down.
Mr. Hess, I just wanted to just let the board know, we're not voting on the program of studies tonight, and just put a reminder out there, but we will be on January 25th. So between tonight and January 25th, I'm sure if you have any other questions ongoing, that, wanted to mention.
Thanks, Jess. So first and foremost, you know, you'll see that we've updated the graduation requirements to align with the required courses. Part of that comes from some changes that we made with our seminars program that I'll talk about in a moment. We've added STEAM technology to non-content math, that gives our seniors another opportunity to earn a math credit, non-content math credit while they're seniors in high school. We've added numerous courses to our running start list, Anatomy and Physiology, AP Chem, Environmental and Sustainable Science 2, more opportunities for our kids to earn college credits. And again, those number, those classes change depending on the staff that we have in the building and, and what their level of education is. And you'll notice that we've removed the STEAM Innovation Academy page, and I'll talk about that a little bit when I get to the STEAM section as well. As far as the English department is concerned, we've removed the notes about humanities. Now that humanities is nine through 12, we no longer list it as, you know, a note to make the English requirement. That is now covers our English requirement. And we're gonna start alternating years for AP Literature and AP Language courses. And this gives our students an opportunity to be in the same class with kids at different grade levels, and it also opens up class sizes and the ability for students to take eStar courses as well. So we will roll out with AP Literature next year for the 2021, 2022 school year, and then we'll alternate AP Language the following school year. For the Family and Consumer Science Departments, we removed three electives, Community-Based Service Learning from Concept to Creation and Recycle and Redesign. We've offered those courses for numerous years with little to no interest, so we're gonna remove those for now. Information and Computer Tech Departments, we've renamed Introduction to Computer Science to Introduction to Computer Systems. This opens up for more opportunities as far as what courses we can offer under that title. And we've removed Intro to Web Design and AP Computer Science Principles, and that's just due to staffing changes that we have in, in who can teach those courses. The Math Department, we've added our MS3 course under the Math Department and Science Department, but that's just the high school continuing our integrated math-science program. The Music Department, we've added Chorus, Music Theory and Ear Training, and Vocal Studio. We're excited to have a full-time music and theater teacher at the high school starting next year. So we're pretty excited about the courses that are gonna be offered in, in those two departments. The Physical Education Department, we've removed the Strength and Conditioning course. We're gonna have a staffing change in, in that department, so there's gonna be a direction change with, with PE. Way Training will, will be a unit as opposed to its own class. So we're gonna go in that direction. Under the Science headings, you'll noted we added the MS3. We've changed AP Physics to High Honors Physics, and the reason behind that is, as opposed to just teaching to the AP exam, the students are able to provide just a breadth of, breadth of exciting knowledge in, in physics for the kids as opposed to just teaching to the AP exam. We've added our STEAM classes under the Science Department. And again, when I get down to the STEAM Department, I'll talk about the reasoning behind that, but you will find all of our STEAM offerings now under the Science heading. And then we have amended some titles, Pre-Veterinary Technology has become Animal Science 1, and Animal Technology and Husbandry has become Animal Science 2, just to kinda condense those course titles a little bit. The Seminar Department, you know, we met with the Ed Programming Committee very beginning of the school year and talked about some changes we wanted to make to our seminar program. Having a course being required 9, 10, 11, and 12 really restricted what we were able to do with our staff. It was just becoming too cumbersome with FTE restrictions to be able to run four separate seminar courses and do the team teaching and the humanities classes that we have found so valuable. So what we've done is, we've created a Seminars 1 course and a Seminar 2 course. Seminar 1 can be taken during the ninth or 10th grade year, and Seminar 2 will take place during the junior or senior year, whatever fits best into student schedules. This gives us the opportunity to use FTEs in ways we couldn't before. Lot of team teaching in the Humanities Departments, we'll see. It also gives students the ability to learn in multi-age group classes. And, you know, we were seeing, we're currently going through some curriculum audits right now. We were seeing some overlap of curriculum between humanities and seminar, so this kind of helps in that area as well. The STEAM Department, you know, when we talked with the Ed Planning Committee, it was suggested that until that's a full program again, and so we can, we can structure that and staff that as a full program once again to take its own page off and, and put it under its sci, the Science heading, since right now you get a Science and a Technology credit for it. So until we can, you know, redesign that full program, and we talked about next year's not the year to do that with the budget restrictions and everything this year, we're gonna, we're gonna pull that main section and just list it under the Science. And then the last kind of major change that you'll find there is, you know, we've added a Drama course under the Theater Department, because once again, we will have a teacher who can teach theater at the high school, and we're hoping to expand that program as the years move forward. So those are the quick and dirty main changes to the program of studies, and then Mr. Scott will now address the CTE changes that we have.
All right, thanks, Mr. Hess, and good evening, everyone. So in the CTE world, we started off with, we use the term "remove," but really it's called "archiving." So these courses will still live within Power School, and in the event that we have the staffing and the student interest, they could always come back. A, a couple of them I wanted to bring your attention to, Chocolates and Confections. Chef's Program, he runs actually two completer programs, because there's such great interest in the culinary arts, as well as multiple Intro to Culinary Arts. So he is unable, there's not enough time in his day to do the Chocolates and Confections class. And then, you know, Mr. Hess talked about cybersecurity and computer networking being archived, and that is because down under adding the following, not letter E, Information Systems Technologies. What we're doing with that, we're working with the, the Advisory Committee, as well as some post-secondary folks around creating a more broad experience for our students. In the computer networking program, it was heavily focused on Cisco Networking Academy. And not that there was, you know, that there isn't strong skills in that program, there was just a, a lack of student interest. We're only getting four or five students a year who are committed to that program. So working with the committee under Information Systems Technologies, they're still gonna have a good exposure to computer networking, but we're also bringing in aspects of programming through the use of robotics, and. But we're also bringing in aspects of programming through the use of robotics and drone, yeah, drone technology. So our, our goal here is to create some good, strong foundational skills and multiple facets of the IT world and really focus in on the work habits that we keep hearing from employers. Because when kids finish this program, you know, employers, if they go right into the workforce, are going to want to train them their way. If they go to post-secondary or into the military, they're going to receive further training there. So that, that was a big impetus on that one. And then our welding and fabrication. So we're running a lot of classes through Mr. Graham's program. Mobile diesel, ag mechanics, intro to welding. So really what we're trying to do is, is really consolidate them into a welding and fabrication program to again, you know, so that students aren't just doing welding, they're learning other aspects. So in the next year or two, you're going to hear more about this program as we better align ourselves to post-secondary opportunities. So if there's any questions on the CTE world, you know, I'd be happy to, to talk you through.
It's, it's really nice and convenient for me to be able to talk about the program of studies. But at the end of the day, the amount of work that I put into this is very, very low. So, you know, it doesn't go without saying, Mr. Forge, the work that she does on this from, you know, really November through February and into scheduling in March, you know, the amount of work she puts into this is fantastic. So I get to present it, but she does all the work. So I just want to make sure I give that a shout out during this meeting.
Thanks. I'm a mean type.
I had a question on for the science department and changing the AP physics to high honor physics. And then I think you might have skipped over this, Jake, moved AP environmental to the CT section, but that's, you know, there. The question that I have, is there an opportunity in the high honors physics to take the advanced placement test? Or no?
It's not
Still?
It's not. Have we, have they talked about doing that as a running start, Blair?
So it's a, it's a both end. So any student can sign up to take an AP exam, whether or not they've gone through an AP course. So the, the material that they're learning in high honors physics is still advanced science. And it does prepare them for material that would be presented on the exam. It just doesn't necessarily have the component of test-taking skills or strategies, things of that nature. So I think when they, when they've talked about going in that high honors fashion, it's really to have, to have fun with the science rather than be bogged down with that nitty-gritty teaching to an exam with the skill and drill. So that's, that's the difference that the teacher, the, the approach that the teachers are taking. Depending on who teaches the course and how it aligns with the community college, it is a course that we have talked about for running start credit, which is awesome because, you know, you, you need a C or higher in that course to get that college credit. Whereas with the AP exam, you need at least a three on the exam or higher. And showing that in one test is a little bit
There's potentially the opportunity to get advanced placement credits through the high honors physics is, I guess, what the bottom question.
Yes, that, that is in the works right now, depending on who's teaching it. Yeah.
Thank you. And then the only other question that I had too, I just wanted to kind of wrap my head around changing of the, the seminars, freshman, sophomore, junior seminar. And I'm looking at the, the graduation requirements in the book just as an example, class of 2023. So they, in their requirements for graduation would already currently be their freshman sem, which was completed. And then this year, their sophomores this year. So that's happening right now. So next year, the only other requirement they'll have for seminar will be that seminar two, and they can do that either junior or senior year.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
That's all the questions I
The AP environmental, just so, because you had mentioned it and brought it up, and Mr. Scott can clarify as we go through. AP environmental will be an option for students within that environmental one. And, and Mr. Scott, please feel free to take over. And then when they get to environmental two in the CTE program, that's going to be aligned with running start credit. So, so they get a lot of options there.
Very similar.
So the, the, the idea with that one, Jess, was to combine the world of AP and CTE. Because, you know, some of the kids that traditionally take that program, it's nice for them to see an AP caliber course and how students work and prepare themselves for it. But at the same time, it was nice for our AP kids to see what it's like to work in the greenhouse and, you know, outside. Because moving forward, you know, they're going to have to communicate whether, you know, you're the upper management and you're the, the, the person on the floor. You know, so that, that was kind of the impetus behind it is to get creative and how we could work the two worlds together. And it was a great opportunity to start that.
Thank you. Any other board members have any questions for either Jake or Rob on the program of studies?
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And, and again, we'll be voting on that program of studies on the, at the January 25th board meeting. So if you do come up with some questions, until then.
So next on my report, we have Ben Jellison and representatives of the Town of Carroll School Study Committee. Ben, if you'd like to introduce people, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. Absolutely. Thanks for having us this evening. I ran through the list real quick. Is where you're starting. And actually, I'm going to share, hopefully if this all works, with you screen. Try that there. Does that work? Everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. I'll take it. So on this page, I have
Here it is.
Oh, they come up finally?
Yes.
Okay, great. So it looks like this evening, that is the, that is our entire committee there. I think tonight we have Rena Vecchio, Tad Bailey, Chris Pappas, Mike Finn, Jeremy Olson and myself represent. I think actually I saw Sue Crabbe as well pop in there. So if you see any faces you don't know, they're probably from the Town of Carroll. And so I appreciate your time tonight. We're just going to kind of run through this. We've met with Chris Franklin and Dr. Anastasia. And they've been very helpful as we've gone through this. And here we go. So why are we here? What's the purpose? And basically, we're here to request from you folks from the board. We'd like to see the apportionment formula for SAU 36, Waymont Ridge School District amended to, from 6040, 60% valuation, excuse me, 60% ADM, 40% valuation to 80% ADM, 20% valuation over a four-year period. I see that. I think there's a little bit of a lag between my slides and what I'm talking, but so I'm going to tell you how we ended up here. I think, looking at the board, Jim Brady, you probably remember, we may have had this conversation before. It was before my time. But I almost think you may have been on the board the last time this happened. And there's been conversation years and years through town about the inequity between district towns and what they pay per pupil to attend SAU 36. So we spent some time this year, the town voted in March at the annual, at our voting session to form a study committee to see, you know, just do some research and find out where things were, 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 what we were hearing, was it true? Was it not true? And so the, the committee started meeting because of COVID a little later than we would have liked, but we were in July. July and August, we started and we spent some time, we've met with some, some different folks along the way. And we came up with what we'd like to see is an amendment to the formula. And how the, how we understand that should happen through our legal counsel is that the board can put a warrant article in this year's warrant to amend that. And we understand that it may not be the most popular thing in the world, but we do think that it's going to help us get to that equity portion. And we're going to talk a little bit about that right now, or I am, I guess. And just to give you an idea of where we are and how we've ended up here in terms of valuation. In 1963, SAU 36 was formed in 1964. The valuation in the Town of Carroll was about 3.3 million. And right now, the valuation is, as you can see, 328 million. So it's, there's been a significant increase in the valuation from the time that we entered the Cooperative School District. The resorts in town didn't function as they do. The second homes weren't here. Those, those sorts of things have changed over the years, over the last, you know, 60 years. Things have changed, but the formula hasn't. And that's, that's what we're asking for. Just over, since 2006, so over the last 15 years, our enrollment has dropped by 30 students. I tried to go back far, you know, to see what numbers were back in the 60s and 70s, and those were not readily accessible to me. So I went with where we're in, in the near history. And you can see that we're down by almost 30 students just in the last 15 years. So that really, the increase in valuation and the drop in students has really led to that huge disparity in, in terms of what we're paying. Our school, our municipal tax rate or school tax rate, however you would like to look at it, but the school district tax rate for us, that rate is 34% higher than our municipal rate. The highest rate that we're paying is for the school. And that is in fact, 34% higher than our municipal rate. Trying to just make sure it keeps up with me here. Just a couple of graphs I'd like to share, and then I'm going to, you know, open it up to questions and, and see. Here's enrollment by town. You can look and see Carroll has 6% of the enrollment in the district. You can see the other towns there, what they have. And then the next slide, one that really was concerning to us. You can see the proportion of the budget from fiscal year 21 that the Town of Carroll shoulders. And that's 26%. That's the highest portion of the budget. And we're have the fewest number of students that attend. And I see some folks there looking. I can definitely share this if if we need to. I can, I can share this out with whoever needs it when we're done. I did, I used numbers that I received from Chris Franklin to make sure that we were in fact, talking apples to apples here. I got some enrollment numbers at the end of the day here that are included in, in these graphs. The, the second piece of this and I, is that we do have a contingent warrant article. We've submitted for our warrant, for the Town of Carroll's warrant in, in March. And that is that should, should we not be able to come to some terms on amending the apportionment formula to, to hopefully make what we pay a little more equitable. We would like to probably move forward, or we would move forward pending a vote of the Town of Carroll residents to start the withdrawal process. So a couple of things here, I, I'm not sure if anybody read the article in the Caledonian, but I don't, I didn't like the terminology threat. This is by no means a threat, folks. We, we needed to have some sort of leverage. This has happened in the past. The town has requested to amend this. We've been through all sorts of my understanding through votes. But there has to be some sort of leverage for us as a town to move forward. We, we don't want to be out of SAU 36. This is by no mean a statement on the quality of education that our students get by our support of the schools. This has nothing to do with that. The true underlying point here is just the sheer inequity of what's being paid amongst the towns, you know, on a per-student basis. And with that, unless anyone from the committee wants to chime in and add anything, you know, I'm going to say no. I, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions that I can. I know Chris Franklin had shared with you some documents. And she did share those with me as well, and those, those speak for themselves.
So I guess it's Jessica Loyacano here. I guess I'll start. So I did have the opportunity, I don't know if the rest of the board members did, to read the article. I think it was Paul Hayes, maybe? That wrote the article. And one of the things I did want to make clear specifically to board members is everything that's being asked of us tonight. To, we do have an action item on our agenda to vote. So the RSA that that Ben Jellison is referring to allows for the school board only to place a warrant article if there is a fund and formula change request being made that doesn't fall under either 5050 of the ADM evaluation or 100% of the, they could bring forward, technically, the Town of Carroll could bring forward a petition warrant article if they wanted to go 5050. Change that current 6040 formula to 5050 or to 100%. I think the 100% would be on the evaluation and correct me, Chris Franklin, if I'm wrong. So for, for their, the research that they've done with their study committee over, I believe I read somewhere around nine, the past nine months, decided that they wanted to look at the 8020 formula change. But in the article, it stated that only the Town of Carroll's formula would change. And I wanted to make very clear that if the, if the board decided tonight to put this warrant article forward, the 8020 formula would affect every town in the district. It would be 8020 throughout the district. So all towns would, if, if it passed by the voters, and we did change that formula. So with that said, we did look at some numbers, we did receive some information. But primarily, the Town of Carroll has gotten their information on what they would save. So I, maybe I can ask you, Ben, by the Town of Carroll, from what you understand, if the board put the warrant article, it passed, and you're now 8020, what benefit or what savings, I guess I could say, would be Carroll's? And then I obviously have to, we all have to take into consideration how, what that impact would be on the rest of the towns in the district, which I really don't think we can hash out tonight. So they haven't had the opportunity to look at how it would impact their taxes. And to put a warrant on the article, in my opinion, is premature and, and not having the board do their due diligence. But absolutely, we don't want you to move forward with withdrawing from the SAU. But, but we're in a catch 22 where we don't have the information at all to make an informed decision for each of us, for each town.
Okay. And so I guess my question would be, the information that I got from Chris Franklin, that seemed to show each town's portion of that.
Okay.
That not shared with the entire board?
We looked at it, but what I'm saying is we haven't had the, the full public conversations with all of our towns in a district and how that will impact them as an individual.
Yeah.
So if we put a warrant article that says the district So if we put a warrant article that says, the district, whether we recommend it or not, but the, you know, by town of Carroll's recommendation, we're putting forward this warrant article, just, this is as an example.
Right.
And we would ask first off, if you have the wording for that warrant article, but 80/20, to change from 60/40 to 80/20 across the district?
Right, over four years.
Over, over four years. And then would we be listing under the warrant article how that impacts each town?
Well, I mean, at that point, that, that would be up to you. I mean, that's why we're presenting this to you. The warrant article would have to come from the board. That, we would gladly have our legal counsel draft the warrant article, but I thought that was a bit presumptive of me to come to you with a warrant article already drafted for yourselves. So I mean, we, we could definitely do that, and, and at this point, this is our presentation to you requesting this.
Right.
If this isn't something that you can't support, or the board doesn't support, then that's, you know, then that's your answer. That's, that's understandable.
Right. One of the things I read in the article as well, is if, you know, we have two scenarios here. You have the request for the board to put the warrant article forward. If the, if the warrant article fails, my understanding that you're gonna move forward to withdraw from the SAU anyway.
Yes, our contingent warrant article in town would have to pass.
And if the board does not approve to put a warrant article, you're gonna move to withdraw from the districts as well?
Correct.
So is there a middle ground that we can meet, I guess is where I'm asking, that it's not something that happens this year, but that we have a district-wide, all towns involved, gathering this similar information to make that decision? Because the numbers that we do have, I can say clearly right now, that Whitefield and Lancaster taxes are going to be increasing substantially. So I don't want to put something forward that the voters that they're voting on don't even understand how it will impact them over these four years.
Sure. And absolutely, that's, that's your prerogative?
I'm one person, so we'll get around to the rest of the board members, but...
In terms of some middle ground, the, the committee felt this was the middle ground. I mean, our, we could have just gone to withdrawal, which nobody, trust me, nobody in town, we do not want to do that.
Right. I mean, we have, we have obviously a long history of being a cooperative district, this culture, climate connections, all that good stuff, traditions and everything else moving forward. And, and because, you know, Carroll obviously is a more property-rich town than the other four towns, but that's not something that, you know, I can't, I, I will say, isn't the district's fault. How education fund is funding, isn't the district's fault. If the valuation in, in Whitefield currently, you know, if they built, you know, a $20 million condominium complex somewhere, obviously, our taxes are gonna go up as well. But one of the things too, when we look, I mean, you can look, it's public information, what people pay for taxes and everything, so I don't want anybody be, to be misled. A majority of the taxes that are being paid to the school district from Carroll will come from those, obviously, valuations that are huge, like Omni, Brenton Woods, you know, condominium complexes and things of that nature. So, you know, the way that education is funded and the town valuation is made, the property values in and out, a $200,000 home in Twin Mountain is paying the same to the town, to the school district that I am here in Whitefield.
Well, no, I, I don't think I would agree with that. And I also wouldn't really agree with you. Look at the numbers, look at where, I mean, look at where our frustrations come in from. As a chairperson, I mean, we're paying $46,000 per student to educate a child from the town of Carroll. Whitefield, let's see, let me look at these numbers here. Jefferson, 14,762 is the closest.
And that, and I'm not saying that 80/20 is not a good thing for us all together as a cooperative district to move towards, but we don't have the information currently in the way that education is funded, and those proportions and the formulas that they use for SWEPT, for this, for that, those are done, that, our frustration, it, it's our frustration as well. You know, it's not, one of the things that really kind of bothered me about the article is that, that it's school spending. It's not. We've had a level budget, we've had lower adequacy aid, because, because Carroll's a, a property-rich town, they don't receive adequacy aid. That's not our fault.
It's not your fault, but, but we don't have, we have no, nowhere to go to get anything like that back but the school district, because we don't get that aid, and we aren't gonna get that aid. We're never gonna get that aid. And, and that's important, and that's the point. That's why we're here tonight. We are a different town than we were in 1964. There is no doubt about that. I understand your frustration. We're just as frustrated, but the fact of the matter is, there has to be some time, we have to draw a line in the sand.
But I feel, Ben, that right now, to do this right now, and maybe we'll come to this compromise, if, if, if we don't put a warrant article on, and, and you don't go forward to withdraw from the SAU, we can spend time over the next year to the next warrant article that might get the voters of the district to be on board with you, even if they're paying a little bit more. As opposed to saying, I, I, my thinking is, we put this out there now, this year, it's never gonna pass the voters, so it, I mean, they're not gonna vote to pay more in taxes than we are.
I, we would have to ask the chair, Sue. I think one of our members would like to ask if that's okay with you.
I don't know who the chair is, I missed the beginning.
Oh, she said, go ahead, Sue.
Go ahead, Sue.
My name is Susan Carbal, and I live in Twin Mountain and have for many years. I'm sitting here with my real estate tax bill in my hand, and the largest portion of it is the local education tax rate. I'm paying $1,840 to the school district. I have not, nor have I ever had any kids in the school district. I don't mind paying to educate kids, but the, the amount is disproportionate drastically. You, you're, we have the, the resorts with huge value, and that's, that's where the disparity comes. But the average citizen that actually lives in the town of Carroll doesn't have the kind of money that the resorts do. So you can't whitewash this whole thing as, oh, your town can afford this. Because the people who actually, the people who actually live here are really hit in the pocket for this, and the amount we're paying per student is outrageous. That's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Sue.
Madam Chairperson, if I may?
Yes, Chris Franklin.
So this is Chris Franklin, the Director of Finance. And so, in the interest of full disclosure, I am a Lancaster taxpayer. And what was said in the beginning, that is, what, somebody from Carroll pays on a $200,000 home is in fact less than what a taxpayer from any of the other four towns pays on a $200,000 home for their education taxes. I really think that the best thing to do, you know, my, my professional advice would be to postpone this so that we have time to get information out to all the taxpayers of all five towns about what the impact there is, and it gives us an opportunity to do some education about the general funding of public education in the state of New Hampshire. And it will create, you know, allows us to create a forum for all taxpayers to discuss this, less than two, with, you know, something more than two days before the budget hearing, to give open access to all taxpayers, to get all of the information possible. So I think it's very reasonable of the board, you know, to say they take this under advisement, and, but to wait a year, and let us prepare for it, get the information out, in, you know, with the cooperation of Carroll and the other towns. Let us get the opportunity to identify the top five or 10 taxpayers in each of the five towns within the district, and what they're paying, and what that leaves over for the rest of the taxpayers. It's, and, and, and I say that as somebody whose salary is paid by all of the taxpayers within the school district, and not as a Lancaster taxpayer, I could make the argument that I have no children in school in the district, and so therefore I don't pay, shouldn't have to pay any school taxes. And that's not an argument I'm prepared to make, right? We all benefit from the education of all of the students within the district. I have volunteered, done, before I was working for the school district, did mock interviews and other things for the school district, and I gotta tell you, the world is in good hands if everybody, every high school student are like the ones that I've interacted with at White Valentine Regional. I haven't had the same opportunity, or I haven't availed myself with the same opportunity to do anything in the, in the elementary schools. But I don't think this is something we can fairly bring forward to taxpayers less than two days before the budget hearing, and have all of our constituents have the opportunity to be well-educated about the issues.
So with your committee, Ben, I mean, I would absolutely not be opposed, and I'm sure the rest of the board members, if we, if we set dates to have public hearings with all the towns involved, to have the discussion, and, and in a new year, bring it forward, or, or develop an advisory committee to the board that has representation from each town in the district. I don't think the board would be doing their due diligence for the entire district by bringing this forward without being informed of the impact it has on every taxpayer in our school district.
Okay.
And it might be that one of the things that comes out of that, is a coalition to address school funding with the people in Concord.
So I guess at this point, we're, we're all set. I know you have an action item, which is action, agenda item number five, so we'll look forward to seeing the board's vote on that, and we'll be in touch from there.
Okay, so you don't want to resolve kind of the intent that, to withdraw from the district immediately on your town warrant?
I can't.
You don't want to address that now?
I'm, I'm the chair of a committee.
If we work together over the next year?
Yeah, I, I can't, at this point, that's nothing that I can agree to without meeting with the committee. And that's, you know, I'm just the chair, I got a short straw, I'm presenting it tonight. So I, we will have a...
When we get our action agenda item...
But yes, I, you know, I, I, you'll have to vote on that, I presume, or table, if something along that line.
No, well, we will hold on to that action item, but I was just, just thinking collectively, when you go back to your committee, if they're amenable, I would love for us to develop an advisory committee to the school board to do this, and, and do it publicly with the information out to all taxpayers in all towns in the district, and what the impacts will be, and look at it again for the next budget season, without you going to apply to what's not from the...
Okay, there's, there are, you know, there's committee members attached tonight here, you've heard from one of them, and there's others monitoring, so we'll, we will get together as soon as we can, and make some decisions based on that. So I appreciate everyone's time this evening.
Appreciate you.
Chris had his hand up, Chris Pappas. Did you want to talk, Chris?
I just wanted to make sure, yeah, give the opportunity to any board members that wanted to speak as well.
Jess, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Chris Pappas has his hand up. Chris, do you want to unmute?
The squares are about this big to me, so it's hard for me to see any hands, but go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear me?
So Chris Pappas, did you hear? I can't find you, but go ahead.
Am I unmuted?
We can hear you.
Yes, you're good, Chris. Go ahead, Miss...
Well, our, our proposal is over a four-year period that wouldn't begin till 2023. And I wouldn't want to change, if we delay a year, I would still go with 2023. That's only 5% a year. Ben did do a formula, what it, how it affects each town.
No, that's, no, Chris, you're, you're a year, you're a year ahead of where we are. The, the board is correct on that. It, it would be effective 22, FY22 is where we started.
Okay. And the board understands it, but the taxpayers and the other four towns, and probably a great many of the taxpayers in Carroll do not. And so what I'm suggesting would be, if you postponed it a year, we could inform all the taxpayers.
Absolutely understood, and I will bring that back to the committee. That's, that's all I can do for you at this point.
Yeah.
No, I understand very much.
My, my concern, sorry, this is Herb Randall, I'm not sure everybody can hear me and see me. Hey, yeah, my concern would be that, that if we, you know, if we did go ahead and put this on the, on the warrant article forward, that we're almost guaranteeing that you'll be leaving the district. You know, because I, I can't imagine with, with such a short amount of time for voters in the other towns to, you know, learn what this is about, once they hear their taxes are gonna go up significantly, I think it'll be defeated. I mean, I, I don't think any of us really would expect that it would pass the, the vote, which means putting it on the warrant is just essentially kicking you out of the district, you know? And we don't want to do that. But it seems like we're setting you up to fail by putting it on the warrant right now.
Right, where if everybody was informed, we could maybe come to an agreement, maybe it's not 80/20, maybe it's 70/30, who knows? But that's something that we haven't had the opportunity to really look into and have a conversation about.
And there, there is the spending side too. I mean, right now, we're looking at a budget that's already, it's already cooked, you know? But if the, the funding formula starts to change, if we look at it next year, you know, we can, we can take that into account more during the budgeting process too. So on the spending side, maybe that will trigger other decisions in the, in the budget, you know? So anyway, I, I hate to see a situation where we're, we're setting this up to fail by moving ahead right now, so, but something to think about.
And just, Herb, I appreciate your thoughts, and, and, but something you said there just was somewhat concerning to me is that, and I understand your point, but that if we know there's gonna be a change, maybe we can do something different with the budget. Well, I certainly hope, and I know the town of Carroll hopes, that the budget is as tight as the budget can be.
Well, it absolutely is, you'll see that.
Regardless of if we're in it or not, that's, that's worrisome.
We've, we've accomplished a very level budget for several years, if not lower than the default budget over the course of the last five, 10 years. Yeah, we make very good use of the budgets that are passed every year while being able to maintain a great education for our students.
Thank you. If you're all set with us, then we can, we can let you continue with your agenda.
Thank you. So, Marian.
Have a great night, everybody.
You too. Good night. Marian, did you have anything else on your superintendent's report?
No, I did not, Jess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So get back to here. So we're at committee reports. So now, Herb, ed programming met on, what was it, the 6th of January, and the minutes on the back of that, your agenda, Chris, I don't know who actually takes the minutes, but it got cut off, so I didn't, so there is...
Jess, you want, you want me to fill in the blanks there?
Complete the sentence.
Yeah, I think it was just a sentence or so, but...
Actually, there's a little bit at the first that was omitted as well, for some reason.
What was that? Sorry, Steve.
I said, I, I take the minutes, so I'm the guilty party here, they didn't get cut and pasted properly from the minute I took to the ones that were, there were some minutes. So let me, if you don't mind, I'll read, it's very brief.
Yeah, so what I have in front of me... Yeah, so what I have in front of me, it, it cuts off at the last sentence that I have is Kristen asked that the next ed programming meeting be around providing services too.
Yeah. And to finish that, that thought, uh, our delivery of education, I'm gonna start over. Kristen asked that the next ed programming meeting be around how well the changes to our delivery of education is working, uh, for students who have disabilities. The other, the other piece of the meeting that didn't get into the, into the minutes that you have at the very beginning, all you have, I think, is Blair DeFord. If you look at the top there, Blair DeFord did a thorough review of the program of studies for the programming committee to discuss. Jacob Hess, Rob Scott, Patsy, and where's, provided some insights into the document for the committee as well. Changes in the program of studies are minor, except for the seminar change and the team change, both of which have been previously discussed by the programming committee. A few minor formatting and editing changes were suggested by those in attendance. Both Kristen and Herb expressed their gratitude for job well done. So that's the full, the full minutes.
Jess, you're muted.
Sorry. Um, so did any other board members have any questions on the ed programming minutes? Doesn't look like it. Your next meeting would be then the first meeting, the first meeting of the month of February, board meeting? That's what your schedule typically is, so I don't know what that date is, but meeting again in February, I presume? Facilities minutes from 1216 are also in the packet and for some reason, I think these were at the last board meeting too. So that's a copy, actually. We already did review that. They met on December 16th, January. So are we not, facilities is not meeting on the 13th, I presume? Or are you? Do you have a schedule? Sorry?
We're, we're supposed to meet on the 20th.
Okay.
The third one.
Gotcha.
We might not want to unless you want to stay home and see inauguration. I'd just soon meet.
Okay. Well, if you don't have any action to take or, um, agenda items, you certainly don't have to meet. Personnel is as needed, um, policy, we do, you know, Marian has gotten through our fall legislative updates and as, as needed, we're bringing them forward. We do have a policy, um, acceptance in first read tonight. Safety, that was postponed. Did you meet?
No, we're, we're meeting this Thursday. So this Thursday.
This Thursday, the 14th?
14th, yep. That's at 3:30.
Strategic planning reports out two times a year, advisory committee, um, will be updated as needed. Unfinished business, the superintendent's evaluation form, um, that sent out, we will be meeting, um, to do the summary evaluation for the superintendent at the January 25th meeting. I have a little bit of new business, um, a couple of things. Um, so it was not made lightly, this decision that I did make, um, and for personal reasons and to be able to focus on my health, I will not be running for reelection for another term after, um, not representing. It's been obviously a privilege and an honor for me to represent Whitefield on the school board for the past 11 years, but it has come to be my time and this, the seat for Whitefield will be open. So if anybody knows anybody that is interested in the position, um, filing for the open seat will be from January 20th to January 29th, I believe, and the candidacy forms can be obtained at central office. Um, you can call them 837-9363 to get that form.
We can also email you. We can also email the form to you.
No, I, I'm saying I'm not running again. This is my last term.
We can email it to anybody that wants it.
You can email it or they can pick it up at central office or probably snail mail or anything else, but make a phone call to central office if you want to, um, if you're interested. Um, I would be happy to speak with any, um, interested parties as usual as to what it means to be on the board and represent and all that good stuff.
Jess, wonderful board member and it's always been a privilege to serve with you. Thank you so much for everything you've done.
I learned from you.
I learned from you.
No, Greg.
You've done a great job.
The last year that you were here, I, you know, a couple of more, I think this would have been my fifth run actually, but, but yeah. Many of you do know about five years ago, I was diagnosed with a pretty rare blood cancer and I've been in treatment for the last four years on a daily basis with chemo and stuff. And, um, given, given the state of our country and COVID and pandemic and everything else, I have, um, two kids that have graduated from pre-K through 12th grade already and my youngest is a sophomore this year, so a couple more years left in high school. I really want to be able to focus on my health and family and, you know, and, and, and be safe and get healthier, healthier. I don't say healthy because they're not very healthy, but, but I do, I, I, I've enjoyed immensely my time on the board. I do enjoy it. People think I'm crazy, like, I mean, you enjoy it. I do, but I will miss it for sure. But I'll come back as a consultant.
Right.
Thank you for everything.
So the other thing, you're welcome, absolutely. It means the world to me. I think everybody should do some public service in their life and I feel good about it. And it's, it's been amazing, really. I've learned so much. I didn't know anything about school district at all, but I moved to New Hampshire, to Whitefield from the North Shore of Massachusetts 21 years ago, when my oldest was five years old for this school district. So thank you all that have been here and, uh, made it amazing because it's a great school district. And I, the last thing I would want to see is Carol to withdraw because the traditions, the community, the connections, the really, you know, for, for something that we don't have a ton of control over when you talk about funding and education, you know, and valuations of properties, come on, you know, we, we can't do a lot about that. Um, and maybe it'll change in the future, but maybe I can do a little bit of, you know, lobbying and a little bit better outside of the school board for the school district and, but I gotta have time to do that and I have to just, like I said, focus on my health and family right now. But thank you. But there is one other new item. So when we talked about the budget hearings, um, Chris has, has reached out to legal and for, uh, for session of the budget hearing as well as for deliberative session, it really is going to be difficult to allow any board members to go remotely. So unless they have an absolute, really hard time to attend in person, all the accommodations will be made. There'll be social distancing, um, you know, safety, health and wellness, of course, is a priority, uh, but we talked about it before to, to, what's that word? Contemplating, per- peraneously? I can't think of it, but if we have a remote board member.
Concerning.
Say, "Thank you." It's like compartmentalizing, that word drives me even worse crazy. But, you know, if, if we had any members of the board attending remotely, first of all, we have to have a quorum physically to even have a meeting, meeting, which is four members of the board. But as we do our presentation, we also have to be able to, to provide the technology so that the people present can hear the person remotely, that the live streaming can be heard remotely, that there can be back and forth conversation between board members, some being maybe on a computer, some not, is very difficult. So I'm really encouraging, unless you have a really good reason, um, to be in physical attendance for both the budget hearing and the deliberative session. So, I mean, I could read you and there's a ton of rules. Physical attendance is not reasonably practiced. This is one reason to go remote. The reason that, that the physical attendance is not reasonably practiced must be stated in the minutes of the meeting. Each part of the meeting required to be open to the public shall be audiable or otherwise discernible to the public at the location specified in the meeting notice as the location of the meeting. Each member participating electronically or otherwise must be able to simultaneously hear each other, speak to each other during the meeting, shall be audible and otherwise discernible to the public in attendance as well as at the meeting location. Any members participating remotely must identify any person's presence in the location of which the member is participating. It can't be conducted by electronic mail or any other form of communication that doesn't permit the public to hear, read, otherwise discern, I mean, the list goes on. So I'm not going to really, unless you want me to read them all.
Jess?
Yes.
Jess, can I interrupt for a second? I know that Jeremy's on this call and he's preparing for this and, and as part of the preparation, he needs to know if there's going to be anybody remotely. Jeremy, are you listening or, um, good?
It's okay if he's not, we can go ahead and just.
He's right here, but it'll be great. If we're preparing for this, Jeremy needs to know exactly. Be there. There you are, Jeremy.
Right.
We, we have a plan, we have a plan in place. We have a plan in place to accommodate, basically based on your list, we can pretty, come pretty good to that, you know? And, you know, technical issues do happen. I can't, you know, I can't say a technical issue isn't going to happen, but we'll do everything in our power to make it right. But I, I a hundred percent agree with what you're saying, that an in-person attendance would be the best option.
Right. And speaking back to what in-board members presenting their slides and the information, um, to be audible, both, both, um, live streaming for the people that just want to watch as well as for those that will have questions in attendance. Um, you know, it's an informational hearing and, and I just feel that, um, we can do it safely. Um, and, but again, I'm absolutely not going to inhibit anybody. I plan on being there in person and I guess we can just take a consensus now and then, and then Jeremy will know for sure what he, he needs to do to accommodate, um, the law, really. So Jay Brady?
Yeah, I'll try to make it. Did you get me?
Yeah. I just want to make sure I go in order of my, I should know this by heart. Dee Holme under.
I'll be there.
I'll be there. I will be there. Jay Murphy? You'll attend in person? Jay Murphy. Deodell?
Yeah, I'll go there. Um, but you, you can't use safe, the word safely in these things. All you could do is that you're going to do your best to prepare. You can't be safe.
Yes. What I mean by that is they'll.
And I think about my cousins that has been saying.
I'm not going to touch anybody.
You know, well, it's just, it's a technical thing. You really can't say that you'll be safe, but you'll do the best to prepare for the conditions with all the.
Right. Well, thank you. That's what I mean. We will be practicing distance. We, we are required to wear masks. There will be sanitizer available. Temperatures will be taken for everybody coming in. COVID questions will be answered.
So, yeah, you know, I don't think it's a wise thing, but it also, within the protocols of what's required upon us in our public service, it sounds like we're supposed to be there.
Yes.
It doesn't sound smart to be there.
I mean.
See you there.
It doesn't sound smart. I agree with that, with these two particular things. I mean, there's legislation happening right now that, talking about postponing town meetings and all this and that, which, you know, to the summer, you know?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I know. Yep.
You know, a couple of, a few meetings back, we made the decision as a board that we were not going to go through that House bill, what was it, 1129, I think, or other? Um, to do it, to go, to go through all those hoops to get to be able to do it a different way.
I can tell you that last year I did that for three school districts and it's a nightmare keeping track of the rolling, it's kind of like a rolling postponement. That's a nightmare.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, we have two left in a consensus. Herb Brando?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be there.
Okay. And Kristen Van Bergen Budo.
Despite what is clearly fervent feeling to the contrary, I will be remote. I live with an at-risk person in my household and we have maintained a very solid bubble. Um, and I really feel quite strongly that if the technology exists to make sure that people are heard, it should be very possible to conduct the meeting with a remote member.
So it sounds like Jeremy and possibly Jim Brady said he would try to make it if, if that's the case. It sounds like we do definitely have an in-person quorum, which is mandatory to, to have the meeting. So, um, one, maybe two, remote board members. For Wednesday. Sounds good. So that's the other thing I wanted to ask. So will there be like Chromebooks for them, for those remote ones that we can see their faces or we'll just be able to hear them?
What we're going to do is we'll put a, um, Promethean panel up on the stage or on the floor, uh, depending on what we review on, uh, Wednesday morning. And then, um, they'll be in through Google Meet on that machine, so.
Like this?
Yep, correct.
They'll be seen like this?
Yep. We'll send the board members a, uh, Google Meet to attend.
Okay. So would it make sense at all that, and then is it going to be recorded and livestreamed live in person? Is that how it works? I was just curious. Would it make sense for the, the, the folks in person to have their Chromebooks in front of them and join the Google Meet? No?
No.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be, um, there'll be a screen up front that has whoever is going to join remotely. They will be on that screen. We'll make sure that the audio is loud enough to be heard and then we will stream the entire thing just like we normally do.
Okay. Sounds good.
And Jeremy has created an email for Patsy to receive any questions from the field and then Patsy will read them out loud to us.
Which is more than we've done in a non-remote setting in any years past, which is good. I like it. As far as people emailing in questions and information and it being brought forward, is that, we, we might need to just really double check with legal on that one where it says no, um, email transmission? So we'll make a note of it, but.
So Jess, so what is exactly the question?
So can legally, we receive email transmissions to be read aloud.
As long as they identify themselves and their town. As long as they identify themselves in the town that they reside.
But they can't do it at deliberative. Because they have to register and be on the supervised checklist to do. because they have to register and be on the supervised checklist to do anything at deliberative. So we can't have these question type of things at deliberative. The first session, yes, I understand that. But this isn't something that we've ever allowed in the past, whether we, you know, not being remote anyway. But we didn't have, we may have livestreamed the budget hearing, but we didn't have a running list of questions for people that didn't want to attend.
Right? Well, we'll ask.
I'm gonna check with Chris if you.
Yeah, yeah.
Because in one of the things that I was reading. Yes.
I asked council about the board. I didn't ask about other participants, so we'll clarify that.
Yeah. Okay. Now we are on to, hopefully, action items. So, action item one. I have a motion to accept inappropriate unanticipated revenue in the amount of $171,777.36 from the Supplemental Public School Response Fund Two. So.
I'll second that.
I heard like five people. I think Chris Van Bergen-Beuto moved. And then I heard a second by Jay Murphy. I know other people spoke, but that's what I'm going with. Does anybody have any questions or comments on these funds? Ready to vote by roll call. Jay Brady?
Yes.
D. Holmander?
Yes.
Jay Murphy?
Yes.
D. Odell?
Yes.
H. Brando?
Yes.
K. Van Bergen-Beuto?
Yes.
That's unanimous by roll call vote. Action Agenda Item Number Two. Could I have a motion to approve the following staff nomination for schooling year 2021, 2022? Gary Brown, Assistant District Facilities Director, annual salary $58,000.
So moved.
Moved by Jay Brady?
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris Van Bergen-Beuto. Any questions, comments? Ready to vote by roll call. Jay Brady?
Yes.
D. Holmander?
Yes.
Jay Murphy?
Yes.
D. Odell?
Yes.
H. Brando?
Yes.
K. Van Bergen-Beuto?
Yes.
That's unanimous by roll call vote. Action Agenda Item Number Three. Could I have a motion to approve the following support staff nomination? James Savage, part-time custodian, Whitefield School, 16, 65 an hour, 20 hours a week.
So moved.
Seconded by Chris Van Bergen-Beuto, seconded by Greg Odell. Questions, comments, ready to vote by roll call? Jay Brady?
Yes.
D. Holmander?
Yes.
Jay Murphy?
Yes.
D. Odell?
Yeah.
H. Brando?
Yes.
K. Van Bergen-Beuto?
Yes.
That's unanimous by roll call vote. Action Agenda Item Number Four. Could I have a motion to approve the following school board policy for First Read? Policy LDA, student teaching and internships.
Move it.
Seconded by Jay Brady, seconded by Herb Brando. So just a quick overview of the LDA policy and the student teaching and internships policy for First Read. We'll come back in another month if we agree tonight to adopt it.
I did have one question about that policy, if I could.
Absolutely.
I think I understand the rationale, but I'm just interested in hearing from Marion a little bit about it. There's a clause in that policy that says the student teachers may only serve as substitutes in the case of an emergency. And I just wanted to be sure that we're clear in the policy about the why behind that particular clause, given that the education that would bring them to a point of being a student teacher is sometimes higher than the education we might see in a member of our substitute pool. So I just wanna kind of understand why it is that people who are student teachers and would seem to be qualified to serve as a substitute would be restricted from that, especially at a time when we know we've got an incredibly short substitute pool.
That's a good question, Kristen. Actually, in the model policy, it said that student teachers may only substitute teach on three occasions. So I amended that to say in emergency situations, because exactly what you just said, they end up getting grabbed in times like this, and they're missing their critical student teaching opportunity. And we just can't afford for that to happen for our new teacher that are gonna be teachers, gonna be teachers, you know, the following year. I've seen it happen in too many districts where they're not getting a rich student teaching experience because they are snagged for different positions.
Hey, Marion, can I chime in on this one, too?
Absolutely.
So I've done a lot of work with the Plymouth State Teacher Prep Program, and this is actually a post-secondary requirement. So as students enter student teaching, it's the university expectation that they do not get used more than three days without access to their mentor or teacher.
Yeah.
So the rest of the time, it has to be with the mentor. So this is more university-driven, and they had input into this model policy across the state.
Yeah, it's because it was abused. It really was abused. And not just in New Hampshire, over the nation, yeah.
I suspected that that might be the case, and I just wonder if there's an opportunity to amend that a tiny bit to put the why behind it. Something to the effect of, in order to preserve the integrity of the student teaching experience and align with standards set by teaching programs, or some, you know, some sort of front-end language that makes clear, we're not trying to block access to a substitute pool. We're preserving the integrity of the educational experience for those student teachers so that our next generation of teachers is well-prepared. And I think that just provides some clarity on that policy.
I'll be happy to do that.
Okay.
Thanks.
So when that comes back, Chris, those changes will be made when we actually do adopt it. So we're still gonna vote to pass and approve the First Read as it is here, if that's all right with you.
Absolutely.
Great. Okay, so now, get back here. Ready to vote by roll call? Jay Brady?
Yes.
D. Holmander?
Yes.
Jay Murphy?
Yes.
D. Odell?
Yes.
H. Brando?
Yes.
K. Van Bergen-Beuto? Did I hear you, Chris?
Apologies, I didn't realize I was muted. Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's unanimous by roll call vote. Action Agenda Item Number Five. Could I have a motion to approve the recommendation by the representatives of the Town of Carroll School Study Committee to place a warrant article on the ballot relative to the renegotiation of the proportion formula? Open this up. Have a motion?
To be clear, that would be, what they're talking about is, are they articles of agreement for the district? The proportionment formula that.
I mean, articles of agreement. Talk about it. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Moved by Herb. Do I have a second?
I'll second it for the purposes of discussion.
Seconded by Chris.
Can someone tell me what the tax rate for the Town of Carroll is?
Off the top of my head?
Not just for the school taxes, but the total tax rate?
Yes, give me, give me about 10 seconds. I have their tax rate setting sheet, but the only one I've ever paid attention to is the school tax. So I wanna look up the total.
I don't have it on that one.
I have all of the tax rate setting. I'm not swearing on purpose, I'm having a hard time saying sheet setting.
You are.
Anyway, I should just shut up and look it up. I can, I have it for all five towns as soon as this opens. Okay, so for Carroll, their total tax rate is 2125. And their local education tax is the highest, makes up about a third. It's a little over a third of that. So their total tax rate is 2125. For Dalton? It's a little slow opening here. For Dalton, it's 2413. For Lancaster, it's 2622. Where's Jefferson?
Jefferson's 2255.
Oh, okay. I'll tell you if you're right or not as soon as it opens.
And Whitefield?
Uh, yeah, 2225, and Whitefield is 2622.
Thank you. Whitefield as well?
24. 2125 for Carroll, 2413 for Dalton, 2255 for Jefferson, 2474 for Lancaster, and 2622 for Whitefield.
That's what I was gonna say.
And in all cases, the biggest portion, no, I shouldn't actually. In Lancaster, the biggest portion is the town. And otherwise, the biggest portion is local education.
Yeah.
So, I have asked the tax collectors in all five towns, who are their top 10 tax? I asked for the top five taxpayers, some have given me the top 10. I haven't yet heard from everybody. But if we look at, like, if we look at Carroll, there are, so I have to take one out because a big part of the tax that they paid was for demolition, but if we look at the top nine, they're paying a huge proportion of.
Of that tax base.
Right, of the tax base. And then I have this same information for Lancaster. I have the assessments for Whitefield, and I followed up with, you know, can I also know the taxes? Because not everybody pays all of the taxes. For example, in Carroll and Whitefield, Eversource or PSNH doesn't pay the state tax part. They pay the local tax part, but not the state tax part. And Lancaster, there's a taxpayer, I can tell from the tax rate settings that instead of having just two bases for tax setting, there are three. And so there's somebody in town to which some tax doesn't apply. I can't tell yet, I don't yet have the information to tell me which tax that that particular taxpayer isn't paying, and whether they're included on the top 10 that they sent me. But I wanna get that information from all of the towns.
Right.
And just so I can show, you know what? Your top five or your top 10 taxpayers are paying this much.
The bulk of it.
The tax, and, you know, so. And again, you know, I keep coming up with a caveat that I'm not, that I am a Lancaster taxpayer. You know, and so I do have a vested interest in this. But I don't have any kids in the tax, in the school district.
Right, I mean, we can't have that policy.
And we don't talk, and we don't work just for the taxpayers of Carroll, we work for everybody. So we need to give, I guess I'm a little bit on a soapbox, but the, you know, we need an opportunity to get all of this information out to the taxpayers of all of the towns.
Well, they need to be informed on what the impact will have on themselves to make an informed decision in a vote, you know?
Because, you know, Carroll has been talking about it for nine months, but the other town taxpayers don't.
This is the first time they're probably hearing, if they didn't read the article last week on Tuesday.
Right, and for them to expect anything to happen between now and the budget hearing on Wednesday evening, you know, because I personally.
Any board members wanna speak to this, or do you wanna go ahead and vote?
I think, I think that Chris's suggestion is not an unreasonable one, and it's a suggestion that I wholeheartedly support. I think my preference would be to table this action agenda item, pending further examination of information by the board and communication out to the taxpayers of every town. I think the thing that's a little unfortunate is that we've lost some of the voices that were here earlier from Carroll. My sincere hope is that they view the remainder of the meeting so they have an opportunity to hear the other board members weigh in on this issue. I think Herb also was pretty clear in the other concern I have, which is that if we send a warrant article to the voters that they have not had the equal opportunity to prepare for, it's highly likely that that article will fail, which triggers this removal of Carroll from the district. And I think that would be really, really unfortunate. So I sincerely hope that the Carroll voters are willing to contemplate just putting this off till the next warrant in 2022, so that the entire district has the opportunity to benefit from the amount of time that the folks in Carroll, at least on the committee, have had the opportunity to spend looking at how this really impacts their communities. And I think it's important along the way that we really look carefully at proportionality, you know, not look superficially at the total tax dollars that come from each of the five towns. The pie chart that Ben shared earlier is very compelling. It looks like this virtually equal split of tax burden across the five towns. But, you know, as Chris is saying, a deeper dive into where those tax monies are actually coming from, and whether that is truly being shouldered by every taxpayer equally in each town is also a different question. And the reality is that, as noted in one of the, one of the handouts that we were provided about a year ago on the school funding question statewide, is that our district really mirrors the statewide problem, which is that we have a significant portion of our towns with lower valuations, and then an outlier town with higher valuations that appears to be that all feared donor town. And, you know, I think local solutions are really tricky when we have a state funding formula that is as fraught with challenges as the one we have here in the state of New Hampshire. So I sort of feel like we don't have, we haven't had adequate time to really digest this information as a board. We've had a single article in the newspaper, which even the committee chair said tonight, phrased things in ways that appear more antagonistic than they intend to be. And it would behoove us to take this under consideration, but give it due consideration, not rush to a warrant article with no time to prepare our voters.
Okay, I have a question for Greg.
Yo.
Greg, the last time when I was on the board, all they wanted to do was withdraw from the district. There was no discussion about changing the rate. Now, when they did it with you guys in 2000, who was it?
2002, '03, right around there.
Yeah, did they discuss changing the rate, or were they just withdrawing?
They, it's, I, you know, I'd just been sitting here biting my tongue most of the evening, but it sounds just like the same as then, where.
Oh, it does.
We talked about changing the rate, because that's what they wanted. And then they said, oh, and by the way, we're talking to Littleton, and we're talking to Profile. So to Ben's, arose by any other name is still arose.
Right.
Brett is a Brett.
Right.
And so the threat is that if you don't do what we're gonna do, we're gonna be looking elsewhere. But I was, what I wanted to say is that Rena Vecchio, I see her name on this committee now, served with me then, she was also a board member. And so she should have given them the advice of. so she should have given them the advice of how we did it then, which was, we had a district-wide committee. I was appointed by the selectmen of the town of Dalton. They called me into their meeting and said, would you please represent the town on this committee? I didn't even know exactly what I was thinking at the beginning. Um, but it was a very good process. Everybody had a say, and we came forward as a committee with recommendations. And that's what needs to happen now. We each, we each like represent our town, but won't, but we're voted on by the district and truly we represent all of the communities of the district. And as a board member representing the five communities, I know, and there's no question in my mind, that we have to give the opportunity to all of the voters to step forward, put their names in, serve as one of the representatives of their town, and have a lengthy discussion on what is the most important way to move forward. And what's been, what, right now, at potentially D-Day minus two is, is a threat? I perceive it as a threat. COVID is no excuse to me. The timing is terrible. Shame on them.
Well, well, like, like Herb said too.
Too much back. Is that good, Jim?
That wasn't bad. Like Herb said, you know, we don't want, we're not here wanting them to be set up to fail. Maybe it is a solution to have this committee come up with something different, like I said to Ben, you know? 73 or 80, 20, but you're not going to get the, the backing from all the districts by saying, do this or we're doing this, you know? Or we just gonna, you know?
I feel it's the only way we can move forward, that we have to recommend a committee of the district, representatives chosen by the select boards of their community, of the communities, representatives of the school district, come up with a formula of who attends, and, and that's how we do it. So that everybody has an opportunity and there's knowledge. We're, this is a bloodletting if we do it this way. It's ridiculous.
No, and, and one of the questions that I did want to ask him is, did he secure tuition contracts or have discussions with these other school districts that you don't know that they're not going to charge more?
But see, those are all questions. We should be teasing out through a substantial look at the issue. You know, I think to their, to their credit, they have raised this issue in the past. What we know is that across the entire district enrollment continues to drop off. Uh, thank you, by the way, Chris, for throwing in the additional enrollment information for our budget presentation. Um, that is clear and I think an important component for our taxpayers to, to have an awareness of. Um, but those, those kinds of questions are not the kinds of questions we should banter about in a single evening as a board and then make a decision about an article on a warrant. Those are the kinds of decisions that need substantive consideration by folks from all five of our towns. And I think Greg's recommendation for, um, a, a committee to look at this across the district as a whole, makes really good sense. I think we can put a box around it so that it doesn't get drawn out into bureaucratic nightmarish scenarios, but provides a fair and equitable way to ask questions like that and examine them with due diligence.
So we can certainly, um, um, someone can make a motion to table with the understanding of creating a advisory committee to the board to study the impact on all towns in the district.
I'll second.
Hey, I was just going to, Greg, you seconded it.
I mean, the, the downside is we don't know if they're amenable to that. You know, I mean, they, they really
We kind of gave them that, they're going to watch, and we're going to have a conversation after before they jump ship or agree to it. He has to The withdrawal process is a whole year process.
Right, right. We have to do, we have to, what we feel is right in representation of the
Sure.
And we can't control whatever it is, if it's a, a shot across the bow, a threat or a promise. We can't control any of those things.
No, we can't.
The only right way to, as representatives, in my opinion, is to offer the opportunity to all of, equally to all the towns in the district.
Yes.
To have that discussion.
I agree. So for
It will take a year, and it would not be something that would come up until like next March town meeting by the time. It was just how it works.
We'll, we'll establish the charge to the committee, you know, and have it put out January 25th. If, if they're amenable to that and are not going to go and apply to withdraw from the district, because we're not going to do it if they're going to apply to withdraw anyway, you know, in the meantime. But, so for, for the purpose, we have now on the table this action item to approve the recommendation. Um, do we withdraw that and then recommend or make a motion to table it?
Well, table it with the idea that we will form the committee. Let's form a committee. Then if they decide they're going to go through the process of withdrawing, we, we'll have to decide if we want to continue or not.
So then what I just said?
We have to do what we have to do.
I'm making a motion.
I would say, uh, I would move to table the, the vote pending findings from a study committee. And, and in all honesty, I think it's worthwhile to take a look at this, um, because the question has now been raised in the district. And, and, you know, you've even said here preemptively tonight, well, if they push the issue and they put their article on the warrant in, in Carroll, then, then they do that. It is absolutely a decision of, of the committee to put it on the warrant, and it's the decision of the taxpayers in Carroll to, to vote on that however they see fit. But the question has now been raised for us as a board. And so I think there's value in exercising some due diligence to just look at what that other apportionment, you know, could, could potentially look like. In an ideal world, the state would fix the funding issue, but we know that there's a commission underway at the state level and we've got to wait for that to play out. But it's worth thinking about whether there's something in our microcosm that could make things easier on taxpayers across the entire district, or more equitable at least, across
Right, but this huge inequities within a town from property, from property to property for how they do reassessment and reevaluations to begin with. So until that
You know what I mean? Like, that's it. But the question has been raised. And so I think it's worth studying the question.
I may, I, I motion to table action agenda item five. And to create a board advisory committee to, what did I say last time? To study
The impact of the Carroll proposal.
The impact on all district towns in changing the apportionment formula. You got that, Karen? Do I have a second?
Second.
defer to Jim.
Jay Brady. Yes, seconded by Jay Brady. I'm, I made the motion, Karen, seconded by Jay Brady. By roll call vote, Jay Brady.
Yes.
Where's my order? Dee Holmander?
Yes.
Jay Murphy?
Yes.
G O Dell?
Yes.
H Randall?
Uh, no.
K Van Bergen Budo.
Yes.
That is five yes, one no. Motion passes.
I would just, the, I think the advisory committee and the public hearings are an excellent opportunity to educate people about school funding in New Hampshire.
General, anyway, yeah.
Jess?
Yes.
With regards to how this is formed, perhaps like through the superintendent's office and representing the board as well, so you as chair, reaching out to the local select boards maybe to see, you know, how are we going to populate this committee?
Right.
Um, I know, like, for me, you know, I got a call and was appointed by my select board. I didn't look for it, but I was simply asked as a community member who they were aware of to serve. So I think we have to understand, how are we going to populate this thing? Who's representing? And perhaps a great, great way to do it is to reach out to the select boards of the towns. They should have all the information we have from Carroll, and, you know, offer to them and say, you know, it's, we need to have this committee and look, review all of this. And, and just, this is my thought on how to go, move forward.
Yes, and, um, that's something that Marian and I can do with, um, the advisory committee to the board policy and the form that you fill out. We write up what we're doing and then who we want the members to be consisted of, and then, and then reach out and, and even post it in the paper. Um, as well as, I think that it is important for, um, even, it doesn't have to be me, um, representatives from the town. You want to call Dalton Select Board, you want to call Lancaster Select Board, um, but we can certainly do that. And I think we could have a charge and establish that advisory committee at the next meeting. It shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, other people might not agree with me on the board. I'm just thinking, how do, you know, Mike, it's really a question. It's because, how do we, you know, how are we going to do it? But if we reach out
Normally, when we do what we've done in the past anyway, in developing an advisory committee, the board is, is draw up the charge and, um, what we want that membership to consist of, or who we do. And then we put it, put it out in the paper and interested parties would basically call in and
That we use the select boards as equals to help form a committee. That's
I agree.
Involve our community, our select boards, because this is a big deal as far as taxation goes and how it affects each of those towns. I'm just thinking, we want, before we even decide how we're, who, how we're forming, I don't know, I think we had two members of each community or something like that at the time. I don't really recall, long time ago. I'm just saying we want
Three or four from each town. I mean, Carroll's done the legwork, Chris has done the numbers and stuff, and it's just a matter of really getting the information together and having like three or four public conversations before putting it out to a warrant.
Maybe.
So what I heard was about posting in the newspaper, and so I, what we would need to know in our office is what we would be posting in the newspaper. Do you want to just post sort of an open advertisement to anybody that's interested? Uh, um,
Well, we have
I'd go through the select board.
Yep.
Yeah, I think so.
You know, two or three
And the notice in the newspapers would be about any public hearings that we have.
You don't want to have 50 people. You want to have a defined number. So it's two or three people from each community.
Better than, than a select board member from each town to give that information out to the rest of their constituents, you know?
So notices in the paper would be about any public hearings we have then.
But as the advisory committee works and, and figures out, you know, all these numbers and the ins and outs and the impacts for each town and everything like that, you know, we can put in those, you know, kind of the charge to that committee that we want a quarterly report from that committee in a public conversation. Whether it's a public forum is even better, not during a board meeting, you know? Um, have a public forum solely for that at some point to say, hey, you know, this is what we're talking about, this is where we're at, and, and, and have some, you know, a little bit than the 11th hour to, to potentially and, and hopefully maybe even put out a warrant that could potentially pass. It may be better for all of us, you know? You never know. I
I just want to be clear on if we're putting something to the paper, what we're putting, like if it's a public hearing, there, you know, requirements in terms of how many days it'll manage to
It's not a public hearing. It would be, no, we're established in the committee, and when we're looking for membership, we can look throughout, but I, I can't say that to you, I can't answer that for you now. I have to get the
Chris, that we can follow. Um, but I, I do have a question. If they go ahead and put their warrant article on their town, put a warrant on their town article, and this is a moot point. You still, we still want to do it even if they
I think, I think that's what Chris, Chris Van Bergen Budo spoke to earlier in that, if this is the third time they're coming, and, and chances are, you know, that, that withdrawal might be a three-year process. And, and if they bring it to the state and the state may say no, you know, and likely will. It still has to come back to the voters, doesn't it?
I think, yeah, the, the towns or the district have to vote to allow them to leave or something crazy like that.
Right. Right, so it's going to be a vote.
But then they can appeal to the state board, and that's what, that's what Ben said to us, yes.
Right. So if they do appro, uh, uh, you know, um, move forward before we even establish this committee and make the decision that they're going to withdraw because we're not putting the warrant in on this year, our voters in the rest of the districts and town, towns should be informed of what that, you know, this all come, accumulates to that.
Right. So, but I'm just wondering, do we, do we go through the motions of reaching out to the selectmen and getting a study, our own districts?
Knowing whether they're going to
Prior to knowing, yeah. So I
No, I think would say, like Ben said, he has to get together with this committee to see if they will, you know, kind of back off and say, hey, let's do this committee and let's, let all the towns have the information that they're going to be voting on. So until we hear from him, we won't establish anything. That move forward with the, making the phone calls to a select board or, or even, we have to accept the charge as a board for an advisory committee, you know? We can do that by the 25th. I think Ben Jealouson will have spoken with the rest of his committee and make a decision whether or not they're going to move forward on withdrawing.
Okay, that makes sense to me. I didn't want to do all this work and then say, never mind.
Simply noticing the select board doesn't take us that much effort of, you know, where we're at. And we may, may, just like we did in 2003, this forming of this committee, blah, blah, blah. They, they probably want to know where we're at with all this if they haven't heard.
Right, right. Yeah, no.
I can send them an update.
I'm saying, and trying to
Okay.
But yeah, I, I think, um, we'll reach out again just to kind of solidify with Ben Jealouson that, you know, this was the result of our meeting tonight, if they're not listening anyway. Um, and please, when you do get to meet with your committee, let us know as soon as possible so we know whether to move forward with this or not. Or move forward with something, but it might not look as the same if they're not withdrawing versus if they are.
Well, withdrawing is a three-year process, so I think it might still be worth going through the, and I, having the committee, right. Um, because they can change their minds, and we still need to explain the consequences to taxpayers.
Yes. Think we're all on the same page. Now, we had the added, um, adjustments to the agenda, so we are now on action item agenda. Sorry.
Did we vote on that? Yeah, did we vote?
Did we? Yeah.
No, I don't think you did it on article five. On, um, yeah, agenda item number five. I don't think you voted.
Yeah, that's right. Her voted no.
We voted to table the action agenda item.
Yes.
Yes.
Five yes, one no.
Motion.
Okay, action agenda item number six. Could I have a motion to approve to amend the previously approved gross budget, now known as the warrant article two, to reflect the reduction of COVID contingencies in the amount of $165,405?
So move.
Move by Jay Brady?
Second.
Seconded by Jay Murphy. Does anybody have any questions, comments there? We're ready to vote by roll call. Jay Brady?
Yeah.
Dee Holmander?
Yes.
Jay, no, not me, Jay Murphy?
Yes.
G O Dell? H Randall?
Yes.
Yes.
K Van Bergen Budo?
Yes.
That's unanimous by roll call vote. Action agenda item number seven, could I have a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two proposed gross budget in the amount of twenty-one million, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars as amended?
So moved.
Moved by K Van Bergen Budo, seconded by, was that you, Jay Brady?
Yeah, I think so. I haven't followed
Seconded by Jay Brady. As amended, any questions, comments on that? Ready to vote by roll call, Jay Brady?
Yes.
Dee Holmander?
Yes.
Jay Murphy?
Yes.
G O Dell?
Yes.
H Randall?
Yes.
K Van Bergen Budo?
Yes.
That's unanimous by roll call vote. Don't believe we need a non-public? No, Marian's shaking, no. Sorry, meeting adjourned eight forty.
Um, Jess, just remind everybody about Wednesday, the three meetings on Wednesday, the times, five forty-five.
February thirteenth, budget hearing, five forty-five for a